Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the November meeting of the Lewisville Town Council. So nice to see all of you in the audience tonight. Some familiar faces and some new faces, so welcome. Glad you're here with us this evening. Thank you for the folks at home watching us on TV 6. Glad you could join us to watch your town government in action. And those of you that are watching on Facebook, are we on Facebook Veronica? Thumbs up, we are. So we got all Pistons firing tonight. We'll begin this evening with the roll call, customary roll call of our council members.
Good evening, I'm Jane Welch, council member.
Hey, good evening, I'm David Smitherman.
Hi everyone, I'm Jean Marie Foster.
I'm Mike Horn.
Happy Thursday, I'm Melissa Hunt.
And I'm Fred Franklin.
Very good. We also have with us our town manager, our town attorney, our town public works director, our sergeant of our community policing, our communications specialist, our town clerk, and our town finance director. Is that everybody? Anybody hiding under any rocks, any please? That's about all of our staff. So welcome everybody. We'll begin this evening with an invocation led by council member Jane Welch, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Pro Tem Jean Marie Foster. Please stand if you're able.
Your heavenly father, thank you for the beautiful weather today and all of this week, and for the fact it'll be cooling tomorrow. And thank you for the election that was held this week. We are so fortunate to live in a democracy, and we never ever want to take that for granted. Please bless this council tonight and our staff as we make decisions for the best of our community. In your name we humbly ask, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Moore, have we had any changes to the agenda since it went out?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Council members will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening.
Motion.
Second.
As Hunt makes the motion, Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number two on the agenda, this is the consent agenda. Item number 2A is Resolution 2023-049. These are the financial statements for the three months ended September 30th, 2023. 2B, approval of agenda briefing minutes, this is from the October 5th, 2023 meeting. 2C, that is the approval of the regular meeting minutes, that's from October 12th, 2023. And item number 2B is to, 2D is to unseal the closed session minutes from February 21st, 2023. And last but not least, item number 2E on the consent agenda is Ordinance 2023-047, dissolving the utilities and stormwater committee. And that, Mr. Mayor, members of council, is your consent agenda.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the consent agenda are items that routinely come before the council. As the manager has described, they're generally minutes and financial reports. We take them as a group unless any council member would like to pull an individual item off for its own discussion. Council, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion, Ms. Welch makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. We oftentimes have an opportunity to recognize individuals in our community who've meant a lot to us over the years. We're going to recognize one tonight in absentia, he couldn't be with us this evening, but we're, we want to talk a little bit about Ed Racklin. I think one of the pleasures of being on the council as long as Dr. Sadler and I had been on the council is that we get to know a lot of people for a long period of time. Ed was one of the first people that really became involved with our committees and boards. He was always there, he's an incredible individual, I think. He was very modest about himself, he had an extremely successful professional career. He lent his expertise and his knowledge and his wisdom to our boards and committees over the years. Tonight, we want to recognize him most recently for serving as chairman of our utilities committee. And this is to recognize the Lewisville Town Council expresses their sincere appreciation to Ed Racklin for his outstanding service to the town of Lewisville as the chair and member of utilities committee and stormwater committees, as well as the many other contributions he's made to the town of Lewisville over the years. This ninth day of November, 2023. Council members, may I have a motion? I think it'd be appropriate.
Motion, second.
Ms. Foster makes the motion, Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Ms. Foster?
I just wanted to speak very briefly personally about Ed Racklin. You know, sometimes we don't realize the impact that we have on others. And I'm sure, as Mayor just pointed out, you know, it is humble, but he's also been very involved with volunteering his time through boards and committees. I remember before I was really even involved with this role or the planning board, somehow I was a volunteer and I was at the Galloway Center for some planning event through maybe Forsyth County or something. Frankly, I don't even remember exactly what it was, but I was moved to say, alright, I'll go and provide my time and see if I have anything to offer. So, it was an afternoon deal, and we all sat there, and there was a facilitator surfacing ideas about planning and growth and managing growth for the town. And so, it was over, and I was about to leave, and this gentleman, who I didn't know at the time, was Ed Racklin. He came over to me, and he squatted down, he said, I didn't know him, he said, kid, don't ever stop speaking up. It's important. And I remember just going, huh? And I haven't forgotten that, and it's probably because of that that I'm sitting here today. And I'm sure he's done that for a lot of other people, and it's just a sweet reminder that we don't know the impact and the ripple. So, Ed Racklin, I hope you're watching, and thank you very much for what you've done explicitly and implicitly for the town and those of us around you.
Thank you, Ms. Foster, really well put. Good thing about it is Ed can watch this over and over again as we repeat the show on TV 6. He can see it three times a day if he wishes for the next 30 days. But Ed, we're sincere when we say, thank you so much for all you do. All you can continue to do with, you and Mr. Lawson and I occasionally get together in your living room on Sunday mornings, and we hash out the business of the town and the world, so I hope we can continue to do that for many more years to come. PJ, I believe you're up next.
Good afternoon, it's a pleasure to be back from the Capitol again this evening. Hope everybody's had a good week. Our events are total cost for service for the month of October, 675. 338 of those are security checks, with 45 traffic arrests and violations. Alarms are down, 12, and then still about six minutes response time compared to 775 last year, 494 security checks. Alarms typically run about the same. Not a whole lot to report on behalf of the community police, and I did want to mention that we're starting to enter into where people are going to be out shopping. We're entering into the holiday season, just getting dark earlier and earlier, so be a good neighbor, look out for your neighbor's house. Packages are going to be coming. We always have an issue with people taking packages, so let's try to make sure we get those secured. Watch for traffic, people are going to be leaving their house and coming home late, so look out for each other, look out for your neighbor. If you're going to be traveling, reach out to the community police officer, send me an email, we'll put you on the security checklist, try to go by and file as much as we can. So, it's always a pleasure, I appreciate the town's support, all our deputies appreciate it. You might have seen that we've got five SUVs that are currently in the town now, those are, those have been fast, taken the place of the Dodge Chargers. We're fortunate enough to have five of those there marked up. No doubt that they belong to the sheriff's office, like a Christmas tree, so if anybody has any questions, I would like to get back to you.
Any questions for PJ?
Good, thank you.
PJ, you still have the stealth Don Charger though, don't you?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Very good. Thank you, PJ.
I'd like to thank Mr. Franklin for his help with rounding up some hogs over the year and the month. It was very meaningful, thank you.
It was interesting, that's for sure.
Pam, you have a guest for us.
Good evening. I'm pleased to report that the audit of our financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2023 is complete, and we have submitted the audited financial statements to the local government commission. They were upended on November 2nd. The local government commission has imposed some additional requirements on units of local government as it relates to their annual audit. The local government commission is concerned that some governing boards of some local governments are not receiving the results of their audits in a timely manner, and sometimes not at all. They're concerned with especially recreational units that are suffering financially. So, in an effort to improve transparency, the local government now requires the following: All audit results must be presented to the governing board by the audit firm in a live meeting of the governing board. The presentation must be made within 45 days of the date that the audit is submitted to the local government commission. If there are any internal control weaknesses or matters of non-compliance, they must be presented to the governing board at this meeting. In addition, if there are any financial performance indicators of concern, these must also be presented by the auditor to the governing board. So, to that end, tonight we have with us Monty Pindrey. He is a partner with the audit firm of Gibson &amp; Company, and together we have put together a presentation for town council that will satisfy all of the reporting requirements imposed by the local government commission. Monty will begin by reporting on the results of his audit procedures and the audit reports, and then I'll pick up and talk about the numbers and the financial results for the year.
Good evening. Tonight, I just want to give you a very brief highlight of the audit. Some of the highlights from the actual auditor's report on the financial statements this year were that, well, you will find that auditor's opinion in the annual comprehensive financial report on pages 1 through 3. And in that opinion, it states that the management of the town of Lewisville is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements and requirements with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. This does include the design, implementation, and maintenance of internal controls. In addition, another paragraph in that same opinion, it is the auditor's responsibility to express opinions on the financial statements based on the audit. The audit is conducted in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States and in conformity with the government audit standards. In addition, there's another paragraph which states that an audit involves performing procedures to obtain audit evidence about the amounts and disclosures into financial statements, and it also includes evaluating the appropriateness of accounting policies used and the reasonless of significant estimates made by the management, as well as evaluating the overall financial statement presentation. But the most important paragraph in that audit report is that in the opinion of Gibson &amp; Company, based on our audit, the financial statements of the town of Lewisville present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the town of Lewisville as of June 30th, 2023. And this is what we call, we refer to as an unmodified audit opinion, or we, auditors like to call a cleaning opinion, which is the best opinion you can issue. Is that what you're saying? In addition to the normal audit that we had to do this year, anytime a town expends more than $750,000 in federal monies, you're required to do what we call a single audit. And the town did expend approximately 1.6 million in federal and state monies, but the, since you did expend or use $1,105,603 of your ARPA money that was in association with the coronavirus funds that you received, to reimburse the general fund for salaries and benefits for the period from July 1st, '22 through June 30th, 2023, we were required to do a single audit. And since that program was above $750,000, it's considered to be what we call a major program, and anytime you have a major program, we're required to test that along, as part of the single audit. And since we're required to test that as a major program, we have to look at that grant's internal, or the internal controls and the compliance that goes along with that federal award. And as a result of our testing, we found no internal control deficiencies and no matters of non-compliance on that particular federal award, so everything was good with that also. Now, sort of taking a look at some of the other general audit comments. All the bank accounts were properly reconciled, all balance sheet accounts were properly reconciled. The accounting records were in neat and good order, there were no adjusting entries, which is a very good thing, because a lot, some of the towns we do, you know, we have a lot of entries, but you know, have a great finance officer who puts the financial statements together very good, and there were no adjusting internal entries this year. We did not find any internal control deficiencies, no matters of non-compliance. There were no budget violations in the general fund or any of your other governmental funds, and there were no, as Pam said, we have to talk about any performance indicators of concern, and there were no performance indicators for this year. I know I went through that pretty fast, but I'm going to turn it over to Pam, and I think she's going to go over the actual, some of the actual auditing numbers for you tonight.
And probably the most important number of all, and the one that draws the most attention, of course, is the fund balance in the general fund. And the general fund is the main operating fund of the town, of course. At June 30th, 2023, the town had a general fund balance of $6,21,923. The general fund balance did decrease this year by $1,921,211. Several factors did work together to cause the fund balance to decrease by this amount. First of all, the town did participate in a mediated settlement process with a local developer that did result in a payment from the town to the developer, any amount of In addition, we did transfer funds to two of our capital project funds. $1,276,617 was transferred to the Gateway Project Capital Project Fund, this was to help pay for construction expenditures. In addition, we transferred $306,297 to the Roundabout at Lewisville-Diana Road and Robin Hood Road Capital Project. This was to help pay for preliminary engineering and right-of-way. There were also several capital outlay expenditures this year, and of course, those were paid out of fund balance. To begin with, we added solar panels to the Mary Alice Warren Community Center in the amount of $8,212. We did install two electric vehicle charging stations on David McKee, that cost $48,305. We purchased some new tables and chairs for the Mary Alice Warren Community Center at a cost of $61,440. We also added new audiovisual equipment to this council chamber for $36,571. And we also purchased new security camera equipment for Town Hall, the Mary Alice, Charlotte Creek Square, and Jack Warren Park, that cost $31,461. Now, there are also several items that had a positive effect on fund balance, to help offset the ones that I just mentioned. The largest is, of course, our ARPA money. As Monty mentioned, we did transfer $1,105,603 from the American Rescue Plan Fund to the general fund. Now, in accordance with ARPA guidelines, these funds were categorized as revenue replacement and used to reimburse the general fund for general government services, more specifically salaries and benefits for the period July 22 through June 23. We also had certain revenue sources that came in significantly better than we anticipated, that added to an increase in our fund balance. First of all, sales tax revenue came in significantly over budget this year by $168,671. This was a 14% increase over prior year. In addition, the profit distribution from the ABC4 came in significantly over budget by $47,995. This was a 12% increase over prior year. And then our investment earnings came in significantly higher than we anticipated, by $148,663. And lastly, another factor that was an increase to our fund balance was our annual street pay. We had budgeted that at $425,064. This was to be paid out of current revenues, but it was postponed until this current fiscal year that we're in right now, so that also added to the increase in our fund balance. So, all of these items worked together to add, to come to the net decrease in our general fund balance for the year. Now, it's very difficult to look at a single number such as general fund balance and tell if our town finances are healthy or not. Instead, you really have to look at a number and how it relates to other numbers in our financials. So, to that end, the local government commission has provided us with a calculation that they like to use to help measure the financial health of units of local government. The calculation is a ratio, and it is the general fund balance available for appropriation as a percentage of general fund expenditures. For those of you that are interested in the math behind the percentage, it is calculated as follows. At the end of each fiscal year, and only at the end of the fiscal year, it's not normally calculated in any other time, just at the end of the fiscal year, you take your cash and investments and subtract any accounts payable and other operating expenses, this gives you your fund balance available for appropriation. Then divide this number by general fund expenditures for the year, as well as any transfers out of the general fund during the year. So, at June 30th, 2023, the town of Lewisville had a general fund balance available for appropriation of $5,485,851. This amount as a percentage of general fund expenditures and transfers calculates to 61.06%. Now, if you'll recall, the town council in years past, it approved a fund balance policy, and it states that the town will not allow the available fund balance percentage to drop below 65%. An exception to this policy also reads that the available fund balance may be purposely drawn down below the targeted percentage for emergencies, economic influences, non-recurring expenditures, or major capital projects. And I do feel that the items mentioned on the previous two slides, we seem to fall in those categories. The LTC interprets this percentage as follows. A percentage of 8.33% would mean that an entity has enough cash on hand to cover one month of budgeted operating expenditures. So, our percentage of 65.06% translates to enough cash to cover seven months of budgeted operating expenditures. So, fully leave general fund balance, are there any questions about that? And now, I thought I'd hit, just briefly on the other funds of the town. The next fund is the Will and Run Municipal Service District, and this is a special revenue fund. The MSD had total revenues this year of $44,190, which did include property tax revenue of $38,272. There were expenses going out of $3,400, so this MSD fund did increase by $40,790 and had an ending fund balance of $233,235. On this slide, you see all of the capital reserves of the town. We do have five at the moment. Each slide shows the beginning balance, the reserve, any investment earnings, any transfers into the fund, and any transfers out of the fund, and then the balance at the end of the year. The first reserve is the Great Wagon Road Right-of-Way Construction Capital Reserve, which is the oldest capital reserve we have. The annual transfer from the general fund was suspended in the fiscal year, dealing with a balance of $1,095,37. The next capital reserve is the Sidewalks, Plaid Pacts, and Greenways Capital Reserve. It did receive its annual transfer this year at $25,000, and did end the year with a balance of $163,166. Then we have our Municipal Buildings and Land Capital Reserve. The capital, the transfer into that reserve from the general fund was also suspended this year, but we did end the year with a balance of $135,263. Then the next reserve is the Public Works Facility Capital Reserve. It did receive a transfer from the general fund of $495,000, and ended the year with a balance of $855,961. And lastly, we have the New and Creative Parks and Recreation Capital Reserve. It did receive a transfer from the general fund of $400,000, and then ended the year with a balance of $414,845. So, that gives us a grand total in all our capital reserves at June 30th of $2659,772. This slide has our five capital projects that we had on the books, or had on the books at June 30th. The first is the Great Wagon Road Right-of-Way Construction Capital Project Fund. There was no activity in that fund this year, but it did end with a balance of $763,593. The second capital project also saw no activity. This was the Jack Warren Park Maintenance Facility Playground Expansion Capital Project Fund. The balance at June 30th was $21,271. It was subsequently closed after June 30th. The next project is the Gateway Project, and of course, it was very active during the year of construction. It did end the year with a fund balance of $1,370,321. And then the next project is the Community Center Project. We are still tying up loose ends on that particular project, and at the end of the year, it did have a fund balance of $267,254. And then the last project on the books is the Roundabout Project, and of course, it was very busy this year with preliminary engineering. It does carry, or did carry a balance of $522,427 at year-end. So, our total fund balances on all the capital projects at year-end was $294,866.
Pam, before we move on, two quick questions. On the closing out of the Jack Warren Park Maintenance Facility one, did that, where did that money transfer?
We transferred that to the...
Jack Warren Park. Jack Warren Park.
That's right, it's the Jack Warren Park Improvements Capital Project.
Okay, alright. And then the... And then lastly, you mentioned the community center one, and that is related to the actual building of the community center, and then we're still haven't completely finalized everything.
Yeah, once we feel like it's completely finalized, construction and everything, then we can decide what to do with the money that's still remaining in it. And you have the option of transferring back to the general fund. You can send it to a capital reserve, or you can send it to another capital project and need the money.
Okay, thank you much.
Alright, and then the last fund, of course, is the ARPA fund. And just to recap of all the activity in the ARPA fund so far, our ARPA funding that we did receive was $424,472, and we have made two disbursements out of that project in fiscal year 2021. In fiscal year 2122, we did transfer $1,208,168 to reimburse the general fund for salaries and benefits. And then, in this past fiscal year, we transferred, of course, the $1,105,603. And since inception, this particular fund has had some investment earnings of $94,157. So, at June 30th, the cash balance in that fund was $1,804,858. So, that covers all of the funds as they stood at June 30th. Are there any questions? Any questions about the audit itself?
I have a question, please. Mr. Pindrey, thank you for coming. Appreciate you working with Pam, who we are always so proud of, her efficiency and, well, just very happy that she's with us. Normally, your firm recommends either suggestions, any criticisms, or anything we haven't thought of, or we need to consider.
Like I say, we audit several municipalities, and this is one of the few that the financial statements are completely prepared, all the accounts are fully reconciled. We basically just do... We basically just do a pure audit, we take entire numbers in, make sure it all looks good. Like I say, a lot of the towns we do, we have multiple journal entries that we have to make to those numbers, and we even have to actually write the financial statement for a lot of the towns. But Pam is nice enough and good enough to write the whole financial statement, and like I said, there were no, no changes to the numbers and no journal entries. So, I mean, it's, like I said, the, this, the town of Lewisville is doing a great job, so there aren't really any, any major recommendations that we can point out per se.
Not even a raise for her?
Yeah, I think she deserves a raise for all of that.
Well, thank, thank you again for coming.
As the representative of Gibson Committee, we'd like to thank you once again for allowing us to serve as your auditor. Thank you.
Thank you, it's always good to see you. Even if it's only once a year, it's still good to see you. Council members, any other questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, it, it's easy a lot of times for folks to poo-poo government, and what's the value added? This is the value added. I mean, say that again, Moni, you said, this is one of the few municipalities that you experienced that does this. So I hope for folks who are listening out there, this is, this is a big deal, and it's very much appreciated and recognized, and, and big value added to the town of Lewisville and the residents. Thanks, Pam.
Council members, anything else?
Yes.
Pam, always, we, I know I speak for the council in, in saying that we, we look to you for your continued excellence. This is now five years that we've been recognized by the, what is the, the, the organization that recognizes us for outstanding?
Yeah, way more.
Nineteen or so.
So we can, we can go up to ten?
It's a bunch.
It's quite a few.
Nineteen, I think it's nineteen.
Very good. And that reflects, that reflects greatly on you and your competence, and of course, your assistant, Leslie, who has a big hand in making sure the numbers get entered correctly, and slipped the finger there, and we're, we're down a million dollars, but she does a, she does a great job. Moni, good, thank, thank you again for being with us.
Thank you, yes.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Do we need a motion or anything to accept, Pam?
I don't believe so.
I'm just asking. Okay.
Alrighty.
Mayor, before you continue on, I wanted to let you know that Dr. Sadler did join us remotely around 7:10, but we are having some technical difficulties. We can hear him, but he can't hear us, so he is listening through Facebook, so there may be a delay in his response.
Great, thank you. Alrighty. Ladies and gentlemen, we're at the first opportunity this evening for you to address the council. Anything that's on your mind that you'd like to share with us? This is the first opportunity. We'll have another opportunity again at the end of the meeting. Is there anybody that wishes to address the council this evening? Anybody at all? Alrighty. Kelly, I thought with you coming in tonight, I thought maybe you would have come up and, I haven't seen you in a while, I thought you'd come up and maybe, maybe have something to say, but it's good to see you. We have no old business this evening. We're moving on to our new business. Pam, I believe you have the first three items.
Yes, the first one is ordinance 2023-045. This will establish the Shallowford Road C Mac Sidewalk Capital Project Ordinance, and it will have an initial budget of one million, four hundred forty-six thousand, one hundred thirty-four dollars. And this is to build a sidewalk along one side of Shallowford Road from Lowe's Foods Drive to Shallowford Reserve Drive.
Any questions for Pam? Entertaining motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
If a mixed motion, Miss Hunt makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous.
And we have ordinance 2023-046. This will amend budget ordinance 2023-001. This will transfer two hundred sixty-two thousand, nine hundred thirty-three dollars from the general fund to the newly created Shallowford Road C Mac Sidewalk Capital Project Fund, and this will represent the twenty percent town match.
Any questions for Pam?
Move for approval.
Ms. Welch makes the motion.
Second.
Mr. Smithman makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous.
And then we have resolution 2023-050. This is establishing an internal control policy, and we did brief you on this at the last meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I hope you've had the opportunity to look at it between then and now. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Pam?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Franklin makes the motion. Ms. Foster makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. Righty, James, I think you're in the chute.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 60 on the agenda, this is resolution 2023-051, Supporting Clean Energy. We've continued to work with our Environmental Conservation and Sustainability Committee, or ECSC, regarding long-term sustainability initiatives and feasibility of these programs. During a review of the existing resolution supporting clean energy, it was noted that the original ECSC resolution did not match the state of North Carolina language on which it was based. Therefore, the resolution before you changed just a couple of words that we should strive to achieve the renewable energy and sustainability goals outlined in the resolution. The ECSC voted unanimously to recommend this updated version for your approval, and staff recommends approval as well.
Any questions for the manager? Entertaining motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion. Ms. Foster makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Item number 6E, this is resolution 2023-052. This is a one-time facility fee exemption for Forsyth County Sheriff's Office. The FCSO would like to use Shallowford Square for their bicycle ride fundraiser on September 7th, 2024. Now, this event would benefit their foundation, which helps employees, victims, memorial funds, crime prevention, and, as well as civic and educational programs. Staff recommends approval of this one-time exemption.
Any questions for the manager? Motion, please.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Smithman makes the motion. Ms. Welch makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is also unanimous.
Item number 6F is the next up on the agenda. This is resolution 2023-053. This is also a one-time facility fee exemption, in this case, for the North Carolina League of Municipalities. The league will be holding its regional meeting on March 28th, 2024, with a focus on risk management and assistance to members. As many may know, Lewisville is a member of the league, and, and of course, we will be attending this conference as we seek their advice and guidance to help better serve our community. The request is for use of the Mary Alice Warren Community Center for that day, and staff does recommend approval.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Makes the motion. Ms. Welch makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. By the way, we're honored to be chosen by the league to have this particular event at our Mary Alice Warren Community Center. I think anytime that we can work with a statewide organization that represents local governance in Raleigh, and they choose to come to our little community, we're, we're very pleased to have them. Final item.
Yes, sir. Item number 6G, this is resolution 2023-054. It is indeed a facility fee exemption, but this is for the Lewisville Clemens Chamber of Commerce Leads Group here in Lewisville. So we have been working with the Lewisville Clemens Chamber of Commerce to increase their support for Lewisville area businesses, and in fact, the chamber recently started a Lewisville Leads Group in which local businesses support each other through marketing, joint programs, educational sessions, and more. With leadership from local business owners here in Lewisville, the group has gained significant momentum with fifteen to twenty businesses meeting weekly. In fact, the last one had more attendees than that, as folks continue to gain interest in this program. Now, this particular request is for use of the community center every Thursday morning for this Lewisville Leads Group. During the council briefing last week, we received feedback that the usage in this case would be suitable for the G. Galloway Reynolds Community Center, and staff does recommend approval in this case.
Thank you. Any questions?
So we are, in fact, talking about the G. Galloway Reynolds in this one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Motion. Yeah, go ahead.
Fred and I, motion to approve.
I'll say.
Significant armors link, Ms. Hunt makes the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Ladies and gentlemen, we, we do cruise through these pretty quickly, but please understand, this is not the first time we've seen these items. It's the first Thursday of every month, we do have an extensive briefing where council members are able to ask staff questions during their presentations, and then we have a week to consider these items before they come to us for a vote at our regular council meeting. So we do move through them quickly, but it's not the first time we've seen them.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just, before we move on, I, I think this is probably the first time that we've had this opportunity to address three separate facilities of the town: the square, Mary Alice Warren Community, and G. Galloway Reynolds. And I think it's great that they're being utilized for the different functions, from a bike race, to a weekly meeting of local business folks, to supporting the League of Municipalities at the most larger facility. So, you know, that's great.
Mr. Franklin, thank you for that observation. And I'm gonna just take a moment, as I'm sometimes known to do. There were a number of us who were, ran for election or reelection this last week, and we were able to stand at the polls and meet people as they came in and talk with us, and the number of comments of individuals saying to us, "We are so proud to live in the town of Lewisville. We come home, we feel like we have community. We look around, and we see the square, we see the community center, we see Jack Warren Park, we see a beautiful town hall, we see the leaves changing along Shallowford Road." This truly is a wonderful community to come home to, and as Mr. Franklin has pointed out, our facilities are being used by our residents, and in fact, that's how we create community. It's not just neighborhoods, it's folks coming together to learn how to get along with each other, to come to each other's assistance when needed, and also to take great pride in our community. So again, thank you for, for that comment, Mr. Franklin. We're down to administrative reports.
Mr. Mayor, and I have the pleasure of going with item number 7A, and these are the upcoming events and closings. So first up, November 10th, that will be tomorrow, that's the Veterans Day observance. The town offices will be closed. Following that, the item number 7A2, that November 23rd and 24th, that's of course for the Thanksgiving holiday. The offices of the town will be closed as well, and I do want to point out, as mentioned in our, in our newsletter, that the trash and recycling routes will be delayed one day for those with Thursday and Friday sanitation service. Item number 7A3, the Holiday Open House with the Shallowford Foundation, as well as the town of Lewisville, that will be occurring on December 1st at the Mary Alice Warren Community Center from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. And in fact, that dovetails very nicely with the next one, which is the Christmas Tree Lighting, also that very same night, December, Friday, December 1st, which has festivities starting at 6:00, 6:30, and the tree to be lit around 7 o'clock that evening. When keeping in the holiday spirit, we've got 7A5, that is, it says Santa Claus movie, but is the Santa Claus, that's, that's the movie with Demi-Lon, it's a nice holiday movie, and that'll be Friday, December 8th. That's also at the Mary Alice Warren Community Center. Now, the movie itself will start at 7:00, but the doors open at 6 o'clock p.m. because we'll be having some refreshments for the, for the families and kids and folks who are interested in this, some fun stuff like hot chocolate and cookies and cider and such. Now, space is limited, this will be an indoor event, so please call the, the town at 945-1026 to sign up. And I am pleased to report our communication specialist, Veronica Laisher, she's one who's getting folks together for that, and she just made a note to me that we've got seventy-six folks signed up already, so.
Oh my.
Lot, lot of response so far to this, this family-friendly event here in Lewisville. Last but not least, on the upcoming events, the Christmas Parade, December 7th, I'm sorry, December 10th at 3 o'clock p.m., the biggest and most fun in the area, so it'll be a nice way to celebrate the holiday season.
If you can drag it, walk it, push it, pull it, ride it, you can be in it.
It's about the truth.
There you go, thank you. Man and clerk.
Yes, sir. On November 30th, we will have a newly elected officials orientation session here at Town Hall from 5:30 until 7:00. This is geared primarily to our newly elected officials, however, the re-elected incumbents are more than welcome to join us as well. A great deal of information will be shared with, with our elected officials. On that note, there will be no December agenda briefing due to it being a municipal election year. General statute states that swearing-in must be done at the first organizational meeting, so therefore, the council elected to counsel the December agenda briefing, so that could be done at the regular meeting on December 14th.
Very good. Any questions? Ladies and gentlemen, we're at that time you've been waiting for, the second opportunity for you to address the council. Anything that's on your mind, please come forward. I see a hand moving, I see a body moving, she has a pulse, please come forward, state your name and address.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is 565, we're off the court. I just want to take up the room, and Mr. Franklin, for their service. I appreciate it knowing you, I'm grateful for your service to the town, and I know everything you've done has been for the town, I appreciate that. And for Jane, Jane Welch, and Mayor Horn, Dr. Sadler, and Melissa, glad you're hanging around. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan, I could tell by the motion in your voice that it's a sincere, true, and we appreciate that a lot. We're gonna talk more about these folks at our December meeting, so, so come back for the roast.
Oh, Lord.
Anyone else wish to speak? We'll remind you that if you'd like to submit your comments, you can send them to townclerk@lewisvillenc.net, townclerk@lewisvillenc.net, we'll make them a part of the minutes of this meeting. Council comments?
Just remind folks that if you're able to, please give blood, the need is out there. Got to do that promotion when I do it myself.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. What else?
I would say everyone be safe, whether they're traveling or staying home. Thanksgiving's right around the corner, there'll be plenty of things to eat, and take care of yourself, don't overdo it.
Why not? Very good. Any, yes, ma'am?
Just a quick comment from the observations and comments from residents on Tuesday evening during election. They really enjoyed the Mary Alice Warren Community Center location. I got several comments about the accessibility, the parking, the ease of not having to worry about students coming in and out, so I'm not sure if that's something that we can relate to the Board of Elections regarding that location, or if that's more of a, something that we need to be aware of, but there was positive feedback regarding that change of venue and that location from the school.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
We'll relay the appropriate message.
Thank you.
Anything else, council members? Melissa, thank you for that segue into the election. First off, I want to thank all the voters in Lewis, Lewisville who turned out this last Tuesday. It takes some time out of your day, it certainly is probably one of the most important votes that you'll make. Your, your local government probably shapes your life and has more influence on your life than that which occurs at the state level or at the federal level. So thank you all very much for coming out and voting, and, and thank you for all the kind comments that you shared with myself and the other candidates that were running for office, we truly appreciate it. Secondly, congratulations to our re-elected and new council members. Mr. Long is sitting in the audience tonight, he's getting a primer for what he'll be undertaking in December. I'm gonna save my comments for Ms. Foster, Mr. Smitherman, and Mr. Franklin for December, but we look forward to, to the service that the new council's gonna provide. I know it's gonna be a great, a great opportunity for our residents. I'd like to remember, I'd like to, to suggest that we all remember our Veterans and Veterans Day coming up. Sometimes we, we overlook that, sometimes we hear it so much, we kind of, it kind of becomes numb in our ears, "Thank you for your service," but truly, our gratitude to those who have served this country in so many wars, those that have given their lives, their limbs, and certainly their fame and fortune in many cases, we thank you for your service, and we'll hopefully salute you on Veterans Day. And finally, the holiday season is coming up, I urge everyone, if you can, please buy local. We've got a lot of wonderful merchants around who have decorated their stores and have brought merchandise in, so before you run into that big place with the two names that are a little fifteen minutes from here, stop in for your Lewisville retailers and see if there's something there that you will find as an appropriate present for someone you care about. Other than that, staff, ready to wrap it? Veronica, congratulations, you made it through another meeting. Jane, do you want to recognize an individual sitting out there?
I thought you said James. I often think you're saying James instead of Jane. Yes, I'm, welcome my husband and brother, my brother has driven from Birmingham.
Those are two different people, right?
They are, they are two different people. No, but I thank y'all for coming and staying for the entire meeting.
Yes.
Very good.
Joy to have my family. Joy to have my family.
With that, council members, won't entertain a motion to adjourn this evening?
Second.
Mr. Smith makes the motion, Ms. Welch makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here. Those of you watching at home or on Facebook, glad you took some time out of your day to be with us, and we're adjourned.